Regular meeting number 11 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Let us pray. Almighty God and Father, the members of Columbus City Council come together in session tonight, and as they come, they ask for your presence among them, for your wisdom and your guidance in their deliberations. They gather in this month of March and on this beautiful day that promises that the wonderful season of springtime is soon to come. As they deliberate, Lord God, make them aware of the needs of the people who are their constituency, in a special way, the vulnerable, the poor, the elderly, and especially the children who have no voice but rely on us to be their advocates. In spite of the difficulties of life in our world today, we know you are with us, gently moving us forward in spite of our weakness, confusion, and fear, prompting us to be hopeful when at times things seem hopeless. May your good grace guide us this day and in the future, and may your choices blessings come upon the members of this council and on the city of Columbus, so that we may do the best we can to work together for a better tomorrow for all of us. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
So move. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Are there any announcements or resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Craig?
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight I do have a resolution that is on consent. I'd like for us to have a moment of silence for Charles O. Ross Jr. And preceding that, or rather subsequent to that, I'd like to speak briefly and highlight his life and his legacy with a brief personal reflection. So if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you. Professor Charles O. Ross Jr. Departed his life on Tuesday, February 12, 2013. Professor Ross received his master's degree in social work from the University of Chicago. In 1960, he was employed with the Chicago Welfare Council. He engaged in grassroots electoral politics in Gary, Indiana, and Chicago, Illinois, and in the struggle for racial equality and social justice during the height of the civil rights movement. Professor Ross and his family relocated to Columbus, Ohio in 1970, when he joined the faculty of the Ohio State University as an associate professor in the College of Social Work. In addition to his teaching responsibilities, Professor Ross served as the inaugural chairperson of the Black Studies Department. Professor Ross received the Outstanding Professor Award in the College of Social Work and served as faculty advisor to the organization, the local undergraduate chapter of the National Association of Black Social Workers. Professor Ross engaged in mass community mobilization and grassroots activism at the Ohio State University and the Columbus community at large during a period of social upheaval in the city of Columbus. He was an advocate for recruitment and retention of African-American students, faculty, and staff, and diversity, and inclusion on the Ohio State University Board of Trustees. He had a demonstrated commitment to youth throughout his professional life. He established an independent African-centered curriculum school for elementary and middle school-age youth, Harambe, which operated on the near east side of Columbus for a decade and the Ohio State University College Bound Program, a faculty-sponsored summer enrichment camp for elementary and middle school children in Columbus and the central Ohio metropolitan area. Beyond his academic and community outreach endeavors, Professor Ross played an active role in electoral politics at the local and national level, where he was certainly active in leadership for both the campaigns of Harold Washington, the first African-American mayor in Chicago, Illinois, and Richard Hatchard, the first African-American mayor in Gary, Indiana. After 35 years of service, Professor Ross retired from the Ohio State University in 2006 as a Meredith, a faculty member. Professor Ross distinguished himself in the Columbus community as an educator, community activist, and public speaker. In terms of a personal reflection, he was a mentor and a leader to me and many others. I have deep admiration and imbibing and enduring respect for his integrity, for his courage, and commitment to social justice, and certainly his innovative and bold educational initiatives and community service that really makes the city of Columbus a better place for all of our families and our children. My oldest grandson was the beneficiary of the summer program that Professor Ross had leadership. And so tonight, certainly we honor him, we honor not only his life, but his legacy, and certainly his family, and we pray God's blessings upon his family. Thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, President Ginter. I'd just like to, two things. First, recognize that this week is National Consumer Protection Week, which is an emphasis on consumer rights, and like to recognize Ohio's own Rich Cordray, who's the director of the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau in Washington, DC, fighting for consumers every day. And also that this Saturday, March 9, from 1:00 to 5:00, at Barrick Rec Center, there'll be a South Side Housing Conference. The address is 5809 Woodrow Avenue. So if you have any questions or concerns or looking for housing on the South Side, that's the place to be, March 9, 1:00 to 5:00. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. President Protam Miller? Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight I would like to present the following resolution of expression, Resolution 005-2X-2013, to honor Captain Gregory W. Lash upon his retirement from the Columbus Division of Fire, and to recognize him for his 40 years of dedicated service to the city of Columbus. And I'll ask Captain Lash to come forward and his guest to the podium while I read the resolution. Again, to honor Captain Gregory W. Lash upon his retirement from the Columbus Division of Fire and recognize him for his 40 years of dedicated service to the city of Columbus. Whereas Captain Gregory W. Lash joined the Columbus Division of Fire on March 12, 1973, following his nine years of service for the Corlaren Ohio Volunteer Fire Department beginning in 1964, and whereas during his 40-year career with the Columbus Division of Fire, Captain Lash has worked on the ladder company at Station 8, the emergency squad at Station 21, the rescue company at Station 2, the engine company at Station 5, the ladder company at Station 15, and the ladder company at Station 1. Captain Lash was promoted to the ranks of lieutenant in 1991 and captain in 1993. And whereas Captain Lash has dedicated much of his career to studying extensive firefighter training and rescue operations. He wrote the division's first rescue operations manual and served as the division's expert in high-rise firefighting tactics, aerial ladder operations as well, auto extrications, and elevator rescue operations. And whereas Captain Lash has also worked to improve firefighting capabilities and firefighter safety by researching innovative tools and equipment for the division. He was instrumental in the division acquiring thermal imaging cameras, scene lighting, chainsaws, and hydraulic rescue tools, among others. And whereas, as a testament to his hard work and dedication, Captain Lash has received numerous awards, including three Battalion Chief Commendation Awards, two Distinguished Service Awards, two Fire Service Awards of Merit, and the civetton Badge of Honor Award from the Central Columbus Civetton Club. And whereas, in addition to his regular duties, Captain Lash has donated his time to caring for the sacred grounds that surround the division's firefighters memorial in downtown Columbus. He has also spent many off-duty hours landscaping the historic train station in Franklinton that serves as Columbus Firefighters Union IAFF Local 67 Hall. And whereas Captain Lash will retire on March 25 after 40 years with the Columbus Division of Fire. Captain Lash's contributions to the division are innumerable, and his service to the city of Columbus and its citizens has been marked by outstanding dedication and leadership. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize, commend, and thank Captain Gregory W. Lash for his 40 years of dedicated service to the city of Columbus upon his retirement. And with that, I open for comments or questions, so I can move passage. Any comments or questions from other councilmembers?
Is it okay to do what I came here to do? Not yet.
Captain Lash, I was determined that fanfare for you was going to be first today because you've put the citizens in this city first for 40 years.
Thank you.
And so we're going to be first in the fanfare over your dedication. So I want to allow the councilmembers to go before you. We're going to do a little fanfare before you talk.
Okay. Thank you. I'm very honored. Thank you very much.
All right.
President Ginter?
Thank you, Councilmember Mills and Captain Lash. We're so excited to... We're going to talk about you for a few minutes, a few more minutes, so you're going to be embarrassed, but you have to take it, because you still work for us. But you can ignore me in a couple weeks. But thank you for everything you've done for the city, for the people that you have served in a time of crisis in their lives. One of the great things about firefighters is that when they respond to the call, they have no idea who they're going to serve and who they're going to help. And it's an amazing calling. It is not a job, it is not an occupation, it is a calling. And you have answered the call on behalf of the people of Columbus for 40 years. And we're grateful to you, I'm personally grateful to you, for all of the education that you've done of me as a councilmember, former safety chair, particularly as Councilmember Mills mentioned around the thermal imaging cameras. And we only have to look to places like Charleston and other places around the country where those thermal imaging cameras made the difference between firefighters coming home or not. And it is a great legacy in addition to everything else that the safety chair mentioned that we're grateful to you for. And I know you're going to continue to teach and educate and prepare firefighters for today and tomorrow from your activities in retirement, and we're grateful for that, that you're going to continue to share and impact this city and this state for a long time to come. So Captain Lash, thank you.
Thank you, President Ginter. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Mills and Captain Lash. Just want to say congratulations, wish you well in your retirement, but also to say thank you for all those individuals who you have saved, the people that you made sure when they were having some trauma in their lives, that they may not have been able to tell you thank you at the time because of what was going on in their lives. But for all those individuals in this community who did not say it, I want to say thank you for them. And again, thank you for serving the city for 40 years, and certainly thank you to your family for allowing you to be able to do your work for all that, for the 40 years that you've been here serving our community. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilperson Tyson.
Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much, Chair Mills. Captain Lash, let me also join those in saluting and recognizing you. One of the real pluses of this job is to honor those who serve, and that's why we're here. We're here to serve and not to be served. And we wish you well, we thank God for you. 40 years is an awful long time, and we appreciate your service. And we're both all, you can see my hair, but we appreciate your service, your continuity and care for this city. And as others have said, we thank you because we know that your family has been a part of this.
Absolutely.
And so we honor you tonight, as we should, for your long-term service and commitment to the citizens of the city of Columbus.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And before I let you have the microphone, Captain Lash is a very modest person. He took me on my very first ride-along, and the lessons and all the days and the times that we spent together have just been priceless. But I have one more bragging piece to surprise him with. This I have in my hand, I'm sorry, this is a little bit of show and tell. Captain Lash created this so that there would be ease at a fire scene for utility cords, and he created this canvas bag, also known as the Lash Bag. And so his innovation, his care, and his concern for his fellow firefighters, to making sure they have what they need, is a kind of dedication that he's had the entire 40 years and will continue to have, because he's certainly passed on a knowledge. But I owe you so much, and I owe you the greatest big thank you that I could give anyone, and so I really appreciate it because you made sure I got it. And I get it, and I appreciate all of the education that you gave to me and the time well spent. And so with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
All right.
This kind of got turned around on me, actually. There's a really powerful reason I'm here tonight, and I hope I can get through with this. I'm kind of getting woke even thinking about it. I thought about this for a long time. I have a little riddle I go through in the morning. I get up a certain time every day, I get up at 4:44. I don't know why I get up at that time, but I do. I get a cup of coffee, and I sit on my couch, and I think two things. What did I do the preceding day to help somebody else? And then what am I thankful for? And there's a lot of things I'm thankful for, but there's not many more that comes to my mind every day than the city of Columbus, the opportunity that you've given me. I came from a very small rural town, about 130 miles east of here. I remember coming up and taking the test, and there was probably 6,000 people there, and my town has about 50 in it, and almost home. And I thought, I'm here, I might as well hang in there. And another thing that sticks in my mind is a little thing by Asops. He was a storyteller in like 600 B.C., and he said, "No act of kindness ever goes wasted, and you never know how far those acts will carry." And why I think of that a lot, I came up and I had to take the physical. When I went over here on Washington Boulevard, and I went in, and if you were too tall, you were out, too short, you were out. And one of the criteria was blood pressure. If your blood pressure was high, you were out. And even though I was young, and I kind of had high blood pressure, and I got there and I was talking to this nurse, and she says, "Is there anything you're concerned about?" I said, "Yeah, my blood pressure." And I think she realized the patient I had for this job, and that I really wanted it. And she said, "Well, let me take it before the doctor comes." And I said, "Okay." So I go in this room, and she takes my blood pressure, and she says, "Oh, it's fine, it's great. But until the doctor comes, I would like you to come and sit in this room and lay on this bed, and I'll turn the lights out and put this music on." I went along with it, but she relaxed me so much, and the doctor walks in, he takes it, and I just barely made it. And it dawned on me, "Oh, I wouldn't have made it." She said, "Oh, no. You were so amped up, you know, a country kid driving around the city of Columbus, and I wouldn't have made it." And I thought, I think of her a lot, I don't know her name, but that's carried on for 40 years. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that lady, and I never knew her name. So I think of that a lot. I think it was March 12, 1973, the city of Columbus changed my life. And for the next 40 years, the city of Columbus made my life. And that's what I'm here about. I've been to a lot of things where you honor your employees, you honor citizens, I'm here to honor you. During those 40 years, I was able to get married, I bought a house, I raised two daughters, I sent them to college, none of which would have been possible without the city of Columbus. It's been an honor, privilege, and you have my heartfelt gratitude for the job you've given me. And I didn't know when I wanted to do this, but I thought, right before I retire, I would want to come up and I want to thank you for what you've done and what you do on a regular basis. During those 40 years, they mentioned some equipment that we purchased, and all that equipment wouldn't have happened if it hadn't have been for city council. Going back as far as Charlie Mennel, he, councilperson Mennel, helped us get the first jaws of life and the rescue tools. And you really had an opportunity to probably get rid of me back, it was like 1977. We got these new tools, and I was teaching auto extrication down on Green Lawn Avenue. So I get there, and I tear this car all up and rip the doors off, cut the roof off, ripped the steering column out, and we left. Well, that night, the PA system opened up at Station 2, and they said, "Lash, you better get an attorney." And they were laughing. And I called, I said, "What the heck are you talking about?" They said, "That car you tore up, it wasn't the right car." It was a guy that went fishing down in the Scioto River? But I didn't really get in a lot of trouble when you bought him a new car, and I guess it all worked out very well. Yeah, my nickname for a long time was the Whittier Street Ripper. Then a few years later, I saw a need for more saws in the fire department, because we do a lot of forcible entry and rough ventilation, and that was then councilperson Cindy Lazarus. She took the lead on this and procured the money to get a lot of saws for our trucks. And recently, this summer, there was a man up from Dallas, Texas, and he was overwhelmed at how well-equipped our equipment is. And then later on, councilperson Mike Mennel spearheaded a drive to get the original thermal image cameras. And then a few years later, President Ginter spearheaded to upgrade and get more of them, and we have a camera on every truck that runs to the city, every engine, ladder, and rescue. And that's all because of you, to protect the citizens. Later on, I saw a need for furniture. I would go in our firehouses, and our furniture looked so bad, and then I'd go in a township fire department, and they had nice stuff. It just didn't look professional, and councilperson Mills spearheaded that, and we got furniture for all the stations. In cooperation, working with the union and city council, we got a lot of things done, and I appreciate that immensely. So, you know, I think of a quote, "The strength of the wolf is in the pack, but the strength of the pack is in the wolf." But I think with a city, it's the same way. The strength of the city is in their employees, but the employees need the city to support them. And I always felt that the city of Columbus supported, when they saw a need, they got it done. We've got some awful good divisions, parks and recs, sanitation, division of police, I've been nothing but professional anytime I ever worked around them. So it's just been a humbling experience to be in this city. I feel honored and privileged to have done it. And with that, I have a little thing I want to present to the city. It says, "The city of Columbus, with appreciation for 40 years of employment, Captain Gregory Lash." And this represents several things. First and most, it represents my gratitude to the city of Columbus. It represents your efforts to protect the citizens of Columbus. And I have on the helmet, I had them put, the International Association of Firefighters Local 67, because I realize when we work together, how much more we achieve. It really works out well, and I always felt that we are a team, and you support our endeavors. So with that, I want to thank you. It's been an honor to work for you all, and you do an outstanding job, and you're always recognizing other people. So I want to recognize you tonight and then say thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have this evening.
That's all, right? Try to top that, Councilmember Paley.
Not a chance, President Ginter. However, I do have a little bitty announcement. If we could please join Mayor Michael Coleman and me in celebrating the accomplishments of our community through the Greenspot Program. It is being held this coming Wednesday night, March 6, from 5:30 to 8:00, at the Franklin Park Conservatory. The awards will be presented at 6:30 to the program's 2012 outstanding members. Additionally, 12 local businesses will be welcomed as the program's newest members and the inaugural class graduates of the Corporate Sustainability Initiative. Admissions to the Greenspot area is free, it is $11 to view the conservatory exhibits. There will be food, music, and networking. For more information on the Greenspot Program, please visit the website at www.columbusgreenspot.org. Thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight I have two resolutions, and the first one is Resolution 0040X-2013. I'm going to ask Deputy Director Dave Bush to accept this resolution. It is to recognize... It is to recognize and to commend the public and private purchasing and supply management professionals for their unwavering commitment to excellence. Whereas purchasing and supply management professionals, through their combined purchasing power, spend billions of dollars every year and exert significant influence upon economic conditions throughout the nation. And whereas hundreds of local, public, and private purchasing and supply organizations improve our regional flow of commerce through education, networking, and shared best practices. And whereas the city of Columbus participates with regional purchasing powers to aggregate purchasing needs, thereby maximizing local resources. And whereas the Central Ohio Organization of Public Purchasers, the Institute for Supply Management, Central Ohio, Inc., and other professional purchasing associations throughout the world engage in special efforts during the month of March to inform the public of the pivotal role played by purchasing professionals in business, industry, and government. And whereas our city of Columbus Finance and Management Department's Purchasing Office acts as a key leader in developing and implementing a purchasing system of quality and integrity that maximizes the value of public funds and provides fair and equitable treatment to all persons involved in the city's supply chain. And whereas the city of Columbus City Council joins all purchasing professionals in business, industry, and government to celebrate March as Purchasing Month. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize and commend members of both public and private purchasing organizations for their commitment to excellence in the purchasing profession. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Any comments you would like to make?
Councilwoman Tyson, I think you said it all. They work hard every day, and they try to stretch every dollar they can. On behalf of them, I thank you.[731.62][731.62](Applause.)
The next resolution is Resolution Number 0045X-2013, and I am going to ask Kadra Mohammed and her guests to come to the podium. This resolution is to declare March 8th of 2013 to be the International Women's Day in Columbus, and to address the social, economic, and political barriers still facing women while celebrating their achievements and the progress that has been made in support of women's equality. Whereas in 1911, the International Women's Day was first observed in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland, and continues to be celebrated across the globe as a testament to the enduring strength, bravery, and zeal of women both past and present. And whereas we celebrate the progress that women have made while remaining vigilant of the areas in which progress can and should be made. And whereas women's access to education, health care, and paid labor has improved, and legislation promising equal opportunities for women and respect for their human rights has been adopted in many countries. And whereas we cannot rest, however, until our mothers, sisters, daughters secure their rightful place as full and equal partners in a just, peaceful, and civil society at home and abroad. And whereas the Center for Women's Advancement, Inc. serves Somali women and girls in the United States and the Horn of Africa, offering the tools needed to secure prosperous lives and healthy relationships at all levels of society. And whereas we observe International Women's Day to recognize the social, economic, and political barriers that have been overcome, address those that persist, and continue to work toward the day when women's equality has been realized, fully realized. Be it resolved by this Council of the City of Columbus, that this Council celebrates a vital role that women have played throughout the history and remains fully committed to a world in which women's equality is no longer a goal but a reality, and does hereby declare March 8th of 2013 to be the International Women's Day in Columbus. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Kadra?
Thank you. Council President Ginter, Councilmembers Tyson, Paley, Mills, Miller, Klein, and Gray, I'm glad to be here. Every 8th March, millions of people celebrate International Women's Day around the world. But in Columbus, our city, this day passed for many years unnoticed, until I decided to take it into my own hands last year and organized a successful event at the Ohio State House, because I waited so many years. I am proud of everyone who supported the Center for Somali Women's Advancement in this effort. We have come a long way in closing the gap, but the job of attaining equal human rights for women across the globe is not finished. We still live in a world where a third of women will experience violence against them at some point in their lives, where women account for 70% of the world's bore, and where women hold only 19% of the world's elective seats. Actually, in Columbus City Council, it's actually 43%.[995.63][995.63](Laughter.) That's good. I am therefore honored to invite all members of the Columbus City Council to join us in this year's International Women's Day celebration on March 8, 2013, 3:00 P.M. at the Ohio State House. We hope that you all be joining us and millions of others as we celebrate the role of women in society, advocate for further progress, and raise our voices in solidarity with women all over the world. Finally, I would like to appreciate the support, encouragement, and recognition for this important occasion by the President and all members of Columbus City Council. I am particularly grateful for the honorable Councilwoman Tyson for introducing this resolution, which marks a milestone in our city. I am honored to accept this historic resolution on behalf of all Columbus women, and I look forward to working with all of you in making the International Women's Day a birthday for all to remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Kadra. And you want to introduce your guest?
My guest is my friend, a community member, Marion Getty, who is a renowned advocacy for women. And my friend Marion went back to Somalia to help make a voice for women in Somalia to help fight for women's human rights in Somalia, where the violence against women is big. And along with other women who also left their surroundings, such as from their lives in comfortable homes in the United States and in Canada and in Europe, she helped Bush increasing the women's quota in the Somali New Parliament. It was actually a milestone in there, so I want to congratulate my friend Marion, and I will also highlight that to Friday's event, what Marion and other women have achieved for Somalia, as well as other women around the globe. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Do you want to say a few words?
Kadra said almost everything. I am also honored to be here, accept with my friend to memorize and to, the Women's Day is a very important day. We did it for a long time back in Somalia. I am glad to be here, and I am honored to have this achievement, and thank you very much.
Again, I just want to say thank you for the work that you are doing, and I'm glad that you decided to make this an event in the city of Columbus, and it is so important to be fighting for the rights of women all over the world. And I know that you certainly are advocates for women in this country in providing opportunities for young women, I know I was at the event last year, for young women to be recognized and begin to move forward in their, with their leadership skills. So thank you for what you do for women all over the world and in Columbus, Ohio. We know that there's still areas that we as women have to, still are moving, working towards getting the same kind of equality as men have. And so I appreciate what our past has been, the accomplishments that we have made, but we certainly have a lot more accomplishments to make. So thank you, and I honor you for the work that you're doing in our, in our city. I have one announcement on this Wednes, no, it's not this Wednesday yet. On Wednesday, March 20th, at 5:30 P.M., Columbus City Council will host a public hearing on amendments to the proposed 2013 capital improvements budget. The hearing will be televised on CTV, and is an opportunity for Columbus residents to share their thoughts on the budget proposal with Columbus City Council. Columbus City Council is scheduled to vote on the proposed budget on April the 1st. So community members who wish to address the council at the hearing are welcome to submit a speaker slip at City Hall on Wednesday, the 20th, and the standard rules apply for speaking before council. If any questions regarding this hearing, please call my office at 645-2933. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Are there any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney, Judge Barrows, municipal court? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or a resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? If not, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So moved.
Say your second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 383-2013. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 272, 329, 409, and 416-2013. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 574-2013.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 50X and 51X-2013. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinances 273 and 349-2013. Development Committee, ordinances 459, 488, 492-2013. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinances 448, 484, 508, and 515-2013. Technology Committee, ordinance 418-2013. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee, ordinances 221, 342, 385, 411, 417, and 436-2013. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 359, 371, 442, and 462-2013. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 280, 295, 323, 336, 378-2013. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0017, 18, 19, 20, 44, 45, 46, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, and 63-2013.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So moved.
Say your second. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes, with the exception of 323-2013, on which I am abstaining.
Miller? Mills?
Yes, with the exception of 0448-2013, on which I am abstaining.
Paley? Tyson? President Ginter?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. The first ordinance is 0464-2013, to authorize the city treasurer to modify and extend contracts for various banking services with J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, Huntington Bank, and Fifth Third Bank to authorize expenditure of up to $421,200 from various funds within the city and to declare an emergency. There are a number of requests for proposals that were out for banking services, and on October the 3rd of 2012, an RFP was sent out. The treasurer's department received the proposals back on the 25th of October of 2012, and for basically most of the contracts were supposed to be completed by February 28th of 2013. We were unable to meet the date from, based upon a meeting deadline, that did not happen. And so based upon that, we're asking for an extension until May 31st, where we will then look at the different banking relationships. And so for Fifth Third Bank, we're looking at $2,000, J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, $6,000, Huntington National Bank for the credit card processing, $403,700, Huntington Bank, $2,500, and Huntington Bank for $7,000. And again, those are for investment safekeeping account, payroll, and the payroll account and main operating account, the credit card processing account and the operating account, and the water lock box. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Mills?
Abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter? President Ginter, I should take it from the table, so let me, I need to go back and take it from the table. So first, I move to take it from the table and call for a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller?
Abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter?
And now I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig? Klein? Miller?
Abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter?
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0473-2013, to authorize and direct the city auditor to enter into a contract with Huntington National Bank for certain lockbox banking services to be performed for the Division of Income Tax for the period of March 1 of 2013 through May 31 of 2014, and to authorize expenditure of $150,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This contract relieves the Division of Income Tax of time-consuming task of opening and assorting a large volume of mail during the, during the peak tax filing and payment periods, as well as reducing the workload of the city treasurer's staff during those times. The contract for lockbox services to the Division of Income Tax shall be for the initial period of 15 months, with an, with an option for the Division to renew annually thereafter for the following nine years. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Mills?
Abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter?
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0474-2013, to authorize and direct the city auditor to modify, extend, and increase a contract with J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., for the processing of ACH Credit Transaction Services to be performed for the city auditor Division of Income Tax from March 1 of 2013 through May 31 of 2013, to authorize expenditure of $20,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The city treasurer is currently evaluating requests for proposal for banking services and has yet to make the final recommendation, as I mentioned earlier, with regard to this as well as other banking services. So as a result, is necessary... So, as a result, it is necessary to extend the current service agreement for 90 days to ensure that the service to taxpayers is uninterrupted. And I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller? Mills?
Abstaining.
Paley? Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther?
And thank you. I now would like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. The next two ordinances on our agenda, and I'm going to ask, as I'm reading my statement, I'm going to ask Michelle Heritage to walk towards the podium. The next two ordinance on our agenda addresses the city's efforts to end homelessness in the city of Columbus. Our homelessness assistance system is funded, managed, and evaluated by the community's lead continuum of care agency, the Community Shelter Board. The Community Shelter Board operates an outcomes-based funding model that uses measurable performance standards to monitor and evaluate agencies and system progress toward community goals. The performance standards reinforce an overall vision and strategy for improving the homeless, homeless services system and working toward the eventual elimination of homelessness. And before I read the two ordinances, I'm going to see if my co-sponsor on these, Zach Klein, will I can make any comments? Nope. Okay. Well, with that, I am, but before I even read them, you will make some comments first.
I did. I just wanted to come and first say thank you very much for your support in this. The city is our number one partner in ending homelessness. We couldn't do the work without you. And these two ordinances really support the homeless system in our community from the beginning to the end. In the beginning, meaning prevention, and outreach onto street, and then also through shelter and housing. And so, these are important dollars that really support every aspect of the system that we have built here in Columbus to end homelessness. I want to let you know that the work of the redesign continues. We're about to come through with some big decisions. We still have got a problem with homelessness. Our last report indicates we've got a 13% increase in service and shelter compared to last year for both our single adults and our families. And what we know is right this minute, we've got enough room for everybody because of the overflow shelter in which the city is a key funder. But those doors are going to close on that shelter in a couple weeks, and that means we're probably going to be faced with wait lists again. So, the adult system redesign is one that's going to be able to say that no person in the city of Columbus should be unsheltered and that we should be able to flex our capacity up and down with the need. And that is really what we're going to be after as we start to make our first changes to the work that we've been doing. And I want you to know that your folks continue to be a key part of the work we're doing. Erica Clark Jones is on our strategy team along with Kristi Angel, and also Kathy Owens is working with us to really make these things happen. So, again, as usual, you're our key partner. You're our number one partner. You're our huge champion. Two weeks ago, I got to go to Seattle and present on the work that we do here in this community. And I will have to tell you, the city of Columbus is well-known nationally for the work that's getting done here, but we can always do better. We are always striving. We will do better. And the number one thing I think that we really want to make happen is that every man and woman in this community that needs shelter will be able to get a bed and not have to be on a waiting list or out on the street.
Thank you, Michelle. Two things. One, certainly want to work with you regarding the issues you just brought up, that, that since our temporary shelter will be closing, that we still have some concerns around that. So, we need to figure out what do we do moving forward. I also just commend you on two things. One, the average length of stay for people, people and families in emergency shelter was 26 nights here compared to 64 nights nationwide. So, congratulations on that. And also, over the weekend, I see you had a little fun working with these young people. The app to track homelessness, this is pretty spectacular, that I think with the help of JP Morgan Chase, that these young people are coming up with an app that will help us to track homeless people that are out in the community that otherwise you had to come back to your offices and try to figure and put all that information in. So, congratulations to you being the recipient of those services of these amazing young people who are in college that are also learning more about homelessness, but also providing an app to you that you help you do your job in a more effective and efficient way. So, congratulations to you on that.
Appreciate that. It's a great thing that shows how the private and public community come together and also how we can leverage technology to solve problems. That's going to be a game changer for us when that app comes online. And even nationally, we can share that out with everyone else, and other communities can benefit from it as well.
So, for viewing and listening audience that have not seen this yet, but it's in today's Columbus Dispatch in the Technology section, so congratulations to you.
Appreciate that.
And so, with that, let's read the ordinances. The first is 0495-2013, to authorize and authorize the director in the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Community Shelter Board for the purpose of continuing the city's support of the Safety Net Program for homeless emergency shelters, the Mary Haven Engagement Center, and related homeless shelter services and homeless prevention and transition services, to authorize expenditure of $3,22,304 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther?
Thank you. And the second ordinance is 0496, to authorize a direct, that's 2013, to authorize and direct the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Community Shelter Board to support the Rebuilding Lives Program, to authorize expenditure of $831,705 from the general fund and $71,029 from the 2013 Community Development Block Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. There are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther?
Thank you. Thank you for your service. That's all I have this evening in Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Administration Committee, I have ordinance 0471-2013, to authorize and direct the, the director of the Department of Human Service, Human Resources, to enter into contract with the Columbus Area Labor Management Committee, authorize expenditure of $20,000 from the Jobs Growth Fund and to declare an emergency. CalMac is a nonprofit, a not-for-profit organization that promotes the development of high-performance organizations through joint participation of labor and management. Since its founding in 1986, CalMac has worked with many private and public sector companies and organizations and their unions to help them achieve their goals through the active involvement of its members and through effective training, communications, and leadership to benefit the citizens of central Ohio. City Council has supported CalMac in the past to make strategic investments in projects that will ultimately create and retain jobs within the city. Councilmember Paley is co-sponsoring this ordinance. Councilmember Paley, any comments you'd like to share?
Yes, Councilmember Craig. I have worked with COMC for quite a few years, and they have been really effective in job retention and job training. I have to give credit to the people that are running COMC. They've taken an incredible pay cut. They've moved their offices. They've decreased all their expenses in order to continue what they believe is an important service for the citizens of Columbus instead of I. So, thank you for all that you've done to keep COMC going, to help us in our job retention, and for the people of COMC that have dedicated themselves to not only the Columbus but the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you for well-articulated points. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther?
That is all the legislation that I have, President Ginther, but I do have a, an announcement. It's Mayor Michael B. Coleman is asking all of our employees, certainly council members, to join, join us at the 2013 City of Columbus Employee Recognition and Awards Ceremony, celebrating outstanding employees who helped make Columbus the best place to live, work, and raise a family. The date is March the 7th, and the time is 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM. The location is the Columbus Police Training Academy at 1,000 North Hague Avenue. There will be a complimentary continental breakfast. I think that'll start at 7:15 AM until 8:30 AM. Just in the way of notes, all candidates in between years 20 and 40 of years of service, all of those recipients in your, in your departments have been notified. Employees have been instructed to inform their supervisor or supervisors in advance of their plans to attend the event so that the plans could be made for their absence. Please encourage your administrative staff to allow these individuals, as well the, the cost-saving suggestion, suggestion recipients, to attend this event on March the 7th. And for further information, please contact Ena DeFloeder, Employee Resources Manager in the Department of Human Resources at 645-9560, if you have any additional questions. Director, any comments?
Councilman Craig, thank you. You've more than adequately covered it, but just encourage council's participation and that of all of our employees who are going to be recognized. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director Christie. And, and again, I certainly encourage all to attend. That's a great time to honor our employees, and certainly from years 20 to years 40. Thank you. That is all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. First in the Development, 435-2013, to authorize the director of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with Highlights for Children, Inc., et al., equal to 25% of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term of five years, in consideration of the company's proposed investment of $1 million, the creation of 50 new full-time jobs, and the retention of 164 full-time jobs. This is great news for the city of Columbus, and I can't help but every time we talk about Highlights, think of the nostalgia of sitting in the doctor's office, looking for the, the hammer hidden in the tree and trying, trying to identify it. So, I'd see a couple laughs out there. A lot of folks know what we're talking about with Highlights. So, any questions or comments? Maybe someone can, Councilmember Mills could share an experience of looking for a cake hidden in a bush. Okay. Seeing that she's not going to share that experience, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther?
453-2013, to authorize the director of the Department of Development to enter into contracts with various contractors to provide deconstruction, demolition, and asbestos abatement services for, I'm sorry, for Structures and Vacant and Abandoned Properties Initiative, to authorize the expenditure of $2.8 million from the general government, from the general government fund, grant fund, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes and declare an emergency. Please save me Deputy Director Brandon, interim Director Brandon, and give me a little bit of insight on this ordinance.
Thank you, President Ginther, Chairman Klein, and members of council. This legislation supports Mayor Coleman's efforts to fight vacant and abandoned properties through our VAT program. This $2.8 million will be spread across five contracts. We are contracting with four of them for demolition. One of them will be for demolition and deconstruction. We are in this legislation, just asking for your support as we continue these efforts. Do I need to talk longer for you? But this, this legislation, again, it is, is just complementary to legislation that has come in the past supporting the VAT program, and we're just seeking your support this evening for the demolition and deconstruction portion of it.
Okay, thank you. And we do have one speaker, Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins? If you could just identify yourself and state your name and address. Looks like you're speaking for this ordinance. The floor is yours.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Nathaniel Wilkins, here to the chairman of Solely Vacant and Abandoned Properties in the North London area. I've got several questions here. First of all, I think the citizens and the residents should know what's going on. Let me just say a few little things here. It's going to hurt the city when we lose the history of some of these houses far as in, all over the city. A while back, I came to you as 1592 on Myrtle Avenue and some other business, some other houses in the city of Columbus. I had went to the Milo Grogan area to look at a property that has been torched and burnt. Today, it's still standing. I think it's 1057 St. Clutter Avenue. There's three properties that sit right next door to this. One thing I would say to Mayor Coleman and to all of you, I'm all for demolition, but when these houses come down, there ought to be some type of photograph, what was there a history of? What I'm scared of, we are going to lose sustainability of houses was built before 1910. There's three of them on Myrtle Avenue, was built in 1890s, was 1592 on Myrtle Avenue. 1607 was built in 1893. Here we are, we're going to lose the, the history of these houses. I would, I would like to say something here. This was torn down years ago, and today it still sits on vacant land. I'm all for demolition is 120% on one reason, to get some of these signs and vacant lots to reconstruct what's going there in the new-built house, just like Habitat does. 1638 Agnes C. Avenue. It's a three-family dwelling. And here I am, back to you, in front of you again, with this property, even though it's out of town in Vethor. Here again, I look on my computer and, and look at this. What we want to see is some opportunities for sale signs or something that's going to be located on Cleveland Avenue, some business to save before. What I don't want to see is a lot of vacant land in my community. Let me disclose to you, what brought me to my community was some age-old houses that has sustainability and history and culture. And I don't want to see that go less than be put in a photo album book. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I would like to recognize the city attorney's efforts on this issue of identifying vacant and abandoned housing, working with the administration, working with council, and tearing down some of the worst, the worst houses that plague our neighborhoods, and certainly off of the city attorney. Any comments? Okay. But thank you for your help on this, and this is an important piece of legislation to strengthen our neighborhoods. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther?
491-2013, in a lot of ways, is a companion piece of legislation to the demolition because tearing down the houses is only one step. We have to be able to restore houses in our, in our community and, and provide financing and not, or grants and money that's available to folks that may not be able to make the necessary improvements. And so, 491-2013, to authorize the director of the Department of Development to enter into contracts with Rebuilding Together Central Ohio Life Care Alliance and the Economic and Community Development Institute for the implementation of the CHORS program, to authorize expenditure of $180,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. And I'm going to ask interim Director Brandon, maybe just give a highlight of what CHORS is specifically.
Thank you, Chairman Klein, President Ginther, and members of council. The CHORS program is a program that provides minor home improvements and repairs to low, moderate-income elderly and disabled in the city of Columbus. moderate-income elderly and disabled in the city of Columbus. Some of the examples of the program's services include replacement or repair of leaky faucets, incumodes, faulty light fixtures and switches, loose or missing sections of porch decking or steps, and installation of handrails, smoke detectors, and deadbolt locks. Eligible homeowners receive home repair services, materials, and labor free of charge, and this program and this funding will help about 200 households.
Thank you. So this is part of the one-two punch, one knocking it down, and two being able to invest in our current infrastructure in homes and neighborhoods to make them sturdier, stronger, and help the homeowners out. So this is a nice piece of legislation. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
560-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Columbus Sister Cities International, Inc., to administer the Columbus Sister Cities International Program, to authorize the expenditure of $50,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
562-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Neighborhood Design Center to provide exterior design services and planning activities within the NCR and CDBG service areas, to authorize the expenditure of $143,000, $143,161 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director, interim Director Brandon?
Again, thank you, Chairman Klein, President Ginther, and members of council. The Neighborhood Design Center, we have been supporting this nonprofit, community-based organization since 1982, and they provide design assistance to business associations, exterior design services to commercial property owners on our NCR strips, and just assist these businesses with very low-cost architectural-type assistance. This is just a part of our continuing efforts to improve commercial revitalization, and we are seeking your support this evening for this contract.
And this plays, the Neighborhood Design Center plays a major factor in sought improvements and making our NCR districts appealable to business and assist in business growth. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That concludes Development. Moving on to Rec and Parks, President Ginther. First in Rec and Parks, 397-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to set up a purchase order for one year with PNC Equipment Finance LLC for the riding car payments in 2013 for Airport Mental Champions Golf Courses, to provide adequate funding through December 31, 2013, in accordance with the terms of the Riding Car Lease Purchase Agreement, to authorize the expenditure of $130,080 from the Golf Courses' Operation Fund and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
399-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to set up purchase order for one year with PNC Equipment Finance LLC for the riding car payments in 2013 for Raymond, Turnberry, and Wilson Golf Courses, to provide adequate funding through December 31, 2013, in accordance with the terms of the Riding Car Lease Purchase Agreement, and to authorize the expenditure of $111,324 from the Golf Courses' Operation Fund and to declare an emergency. Questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
403-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a services contract with Lake Erie Golf Carts, LLC, and a lease purchase agreement with PNC EFLC, doing business as PNC Equipment Finance, for 40 golf riding carts, and to declare an emergency. Questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
404-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks Department to set up purchase order for one year with PNC Equipment Finance LLC for the riding car payments in 2013 for Airport Mental and Wilson Golf Courses, to provide adequate funding through December 31, 2013, in accordance with the terms of the Riding Car Lease Purchase Agreement, to authorize the expenditure of $32,400 from the Golf Courses' Operation Fund and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
445-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with various nonprofit, community-based organizations to provide after-school programs and services from February 1 through December 31, 2013, to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund and to declare an emergency. Director McKnight?
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, this is an ordinance and a companion to one that was approved in the consent agenda this evening for funding for after-school programs. We have been providing funding to about 22 different organizations over the course of the years to support their after-school programs. This is actually part of the old Education Department that was absorbed under Recreation and Parks back in 2009, and part of the Capital Kids Program. So again, this will support after-school, true after-school programs at a variety of locations throughout the city.
And we learn more and more about the importance of after-school programming and the continuing of education after class, and it's the terrific work that the Rec and Parks Department does in cooperation with the nonprofit sector that helps accomplish these goals in the city of Columbus. And so I thank you for the work that you do, and as well as your staff in the Recreation and Parks Department, and administering the program and getting it out so that our children have an opportunity to go someplace after school and have the opportunity to learn in a safe environment. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
483-2013, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $313,420 from the voted Recreation and Parks Fund, Bond Fund 702, to amend the 2012 Capital Improvements Budget Ordinance 0368-2012, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with CORDA Nemeth Engineering, Inc., for Camp Chase Trail Project, to authorize the expenditure of $313,420 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This is a terrific ordinance that is going to get us started on Camp Chase. So if you'd just give us some highlights about what Camp Chase is and what that means to city Columbus, and particularly the west side.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, Camp Chase Bike Way project is a project that'll run roughly from McKinley Avenue out the west side to Sullivan Avenue. At that point, actually, the trail does continue, but the Franklin County Metro Parks is picking the trail up at that point and continuing west into the Darby Creek Park. And this trail segment, once complete, will be a portion of the Ohio Erie Trail running from Cincinnati to Cleveland. This rail line, we have been working with the owners of the line for some time, and have been able to, through a variety of previously-approved legislation, to get the easements worked out. So this is the preliminary engineering to begin that segment of trail. And as I believe you're aware, too, this passes by the Hollywood Casino and Wilson Road Parkland that we have on the west side, and we'll be looking at that parkland as well. Chris Hadacy and the west side community's been very involved in planning that area. In fact, I got a copy of a plan that was done by the Ohio State University that looked at that area and looked at how this can help rejuvenate, redevelop that west side area, and we're anxious to move forward, begin this bikeway development, begin maybe the bikeway hub at Wilson Road as part of the overall project.
Well, this project, Camp Chase in particular, the section that you mentioned there in the west side, the Wilson Road area, could really be an impetus to significant growth on the west side. So I urge my colleagues to support this. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
510-2013, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $486,600 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund 702, to amend the 2012 Capital Improvements Budget Ordinance 0368-2012, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with Shaw and Holter, Inc., for the design-build services related to the Academy Park Suspension Bridge Project, authorize the expenditure of $492,000 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
516-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Baker Vehicle Systems on behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department for the purchase of two SmithCo Superstar two-wheel-drive vehicles, to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of $27,322 from the Special Income Tax Fund, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code 1959, and declare an emergency. Director McKnight, if you could shed some light on why the request to waive competitive bidding.
President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, these pieces of equipment, there's two of them, will be used to maintain the Ball Diamonds at Burliner Park. You may have seen the story that was in the paper on Sunday after the Arnold of both how that park is so heavily used, the largest complex in the country. In addition to the Ball Diamonds there, they will be used to maintain the diamonds at a variety of other parks, such as Anheuser-Busch, and other diamonds that we have around the city. They're a little bit of a unique piece of equipment due to the timing to be able to get these on. Actually, we've got our first softball tournament this weekend in Burliner Park, believe it or not. That's possible because of the turf fields that we have. But this will allow us to get the equipment in time to begin maintaining the fields this season. Additionally, the supplier is the only authorized vendor of this particular type of equipment in the region, so they're the ones we would have to deal with to acquire this equipment.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that concludes Recreation and Parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Public Safety and Judiciary, the following ordinance, beginning with ordinance 0215-2013, to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue purchase orders for EMS medical supplies from existing universal term contracts established for such purposes with Boundary Medical, LLC, and Midwest Medical Supply Company, LLC, to authorize expenditure of $1,050,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The EMS medical supplies includes, but is certainly not limited to, badges, IVs, pharmaceuticals, and splints, et cetera. These supplies, within this ordinance, are used in the fire division's daily emergency medical EMS operations. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, have ordinance 0326-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology on behalf of the Department of Public Safety, to enter into a one-year agreement effective on the date of purchase order certified by the city auditor's office, with a Cisco, Inc., for software licenses and professional services, to upgrade the current criminal history information management system from a legacy Libra Man Frame technology platform to a modern platform, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of authority and funds between projects within the Information Services Bond Fund, to amend the 2012 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize expenditure of $325,000 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Capital Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, have ordinance 0386-2013, to authorize and direct the mayor of the city of Columbus to accept a sub-grantee award from the fiscal year 2012 Paul Coverdale National Forensic Science Improvement Act via the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, to authorize Jamie St. Clair, crime lab manager, as the official city representative, to act in connection with the sub-grant, to authorize an appropriation of $14,470.25 from the unappropriated balance of the general government grant fund to the Division of Police, to cover the cost of a sub-grant project and to declare an emergency. The city must be a sub-grantees to the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services to participate in this program according to the federal grant guidelines. This is a federal grant program from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, National Institute of Justice. The grant provide program funds to improve forensic crime lab activities. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, have ordinance 0476-2013, to authorize the city attorney to enter into a contract with Secure Investigative Solutions, LLC, for the services of a stalking investigator for the city attorney's office, to authorize the appropriation of matching general funds in the amount of $14,677, to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $58,677 for services rendered pursuant thereto, to waive the competitive procurement provisions of the Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. This ordinance will authorize the city attorney to enter into a contract with Secure Investigative Solutions for the services of a stalking investigator who will assist victims and fill a liaison role with police departments within Franklin County, sharing information and maintaining the data collection on stalking suspects. This ordinance will further authorize expenditure of funds for services rendered under the contract. The bid waiver reason is as a result of the specialized services required. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, have ordinance 0480-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to expend funds with the Franklin County Commissioners for the use of Franklin County Correction Centers for the housing of city of Columbus prisoners, to authorize the expenditure of $4,800,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The city of Columbus and Franklin County entered into a contract that charges a per diem amount for the housing of the city of Columbus prisoners. This contract signed in 1994 by the county commissioners and the city is amended periodically only for per diem reasons. The current per diem amount of $79 per day was established in May 2011. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein, Miller, Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
I'd stay.
Tyson?
President Ginther?
That's all I have this evening. I have just one brief announcement. This Friday is Irish Proclamation Day, and I wanted to acknowledge this year's safety award recipient, Captain Timothy D. Moore, a certified paramedic who joined the division in 1989. Captain Moore is a recipient of the Medal of Merit Award, having been recognized in 1997 for his efforts during the rescue of a woman and her son being attacked by a dog. I am happy that council will be honoring him this Friday, and as always, a thank you to our first responders. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. And Councilmember Paley, if you're all right with it, I think we'll recess this meeting, go on to zoning, and come back to reconvene for public service transportation. Mr. Chairman, are you ready for zoning? Go right into it. I entertain a motion to recess regular meeting number 11.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We will reconvene for regular meeting number 12 momentarily.
Regular meeting number 12 will now come to order. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Are there any first readings to 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Protem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the zoning committee tonight, we have two items. The first one is 430-2013, to rezon 7440 East Broad Street, being 12.4 plus-minus acres, located on north side of East Broad Street at the intersection with Kings Meadow Lane from L.A.R. 12 Limited Apartment Residential District to P.U.D. 4 Plan Unit Development District. The applicant is Borough Properties. Proposed use is a single and multi-unit residential development. It received the Development Commission Recommendation for Approval, the Far East Area Commission Recommendation for Approval, and finally, the City Department Recommendation for Approval. And I have no speaker slips, and if there's no questions or comments, I'd like to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is...
Mr. President, Chairman Miller, old-fashioned ways I was brought up, I was taught to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is 2692-2012. First, I'd like to take it from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And next, I'd like to move to table indefinitely.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight, President Ginther.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I entertain a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 12.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular meeting number 12 is adjourned. Entertain a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 11. I entertain a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 11.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
We've reconvened regular meeting number 11. We're Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. In Public Service and Transportation this morning, we have, this evening, we have ordinance 2747-2012, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Kenmore Construction Company, to provide for the payment of the Contract and Construction Administration and Inspection Services in connection with the roadway improvements, Grandview Yard, Third Avenue improvements, Phase 1B project, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of funds with the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund for the Department of Public Utilities, the state-issue two street project fund for the available OPWC funding, and the Street and Highway Improvements Fund for the NRI contribution, and to declare an emergency. These improvements will include street widening, resurfacing, reconstruction along the northern edge of Grandview Yard. This project also will include the installation of a shared-use path and sidewalk, as well as traffic control devices. The process, project also includes the addition or reconstruction of 36 Americans with Disability Act compliant curb ramps. These enhancements will make the area safer for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. This project will eliminate flooding under the railroad bridge on West Third Avenue that occurs during heavy rainstorms with the installation of an improved stormwater drainage. That's good news for everyone who uses that part of West Third Avenue, including our police officers and firefighters at the Columbus Fire Station 25 on West Third. This project is being built by a team that includes the Department of Public Service, the Department of Public Utilities, nationwide realty investors, and the funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission. This is another project that shows how public and private partnerships can work together to make our roadways safer and improve the safety for the residents of Columbus. Kenmore Construction Company has been awarded this contract as a result of some extremely competitive bidding between Kenmore and four other firms. City council always welcomes strong competition between companies that will result in the best construction project that will improve the public's traveling safety. I would like to thank Director Kelsey and his team for their leadership on this project, as well as Director Davies and his team. This is another example of coordination between intergovernmental agencies in order to be efficient and effective. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage. By voice. Oh, wait, I need to remove it from the table. And by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter.
Move for passage by voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter.
Next, we have ordinance 0433-2013, to authorize the City Auditor to appropriate $2,824,471.60 from the unappropriated balance of the Albany Crossing Tiff Fund and the Upper Albany West Tiff Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with TruCo Construction Company to provide for the payment of the Contract and Construction Administration and Inspection Services in connection with the roadway improvements Warner Road Phase 1 and traffic signal installation Hamilton Road at Warner Road Projects, to authorize the expenditure of $2,824,471.60 from the Albany Crossing Tiff Fund and the Upper Albany West Tiff Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0460-2013, to amend the 2012 capital improvements budget to authorize the City Auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects when the Street Highway Bonds Fund, and to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse AEP for utility relocation costs incurred in connection with the roadway improvements I-7071 Interchase Phase 2 project, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,579,502 from the Street and Highway Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage by vote. A by voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
I'm staying.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter.
That's all I have in Public Service. May I move on to Public Utilities? In Public Utilities tonight, I have ordinance 0168-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Elite Escavating Company of Ohio Incorporated for the Ducksbury Avenue Area Waterline Improvements Project, to amend the 2012 capital improvements budget, and to authorize the transfer and expenditure up to $2,427,745.10 from the Waterworks Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund for the Division of Water. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, we have ordinance 0218-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement with Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District for the 2013 Green Spot Backyard Conservation Program for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, Stormwater and Regulatory Management Section, and the Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $24,000 from the Water Operating Fund and $24,000 from the Storm Sewer Operating Fund. Stormwater runoff is one of the leading causes of degradation to the Ohio waterways. The Green Spot Rain Barrel Program provides Columbus residents an education of the effects of urban runoff. The program also provides the tools to manage stormwater issues by using rain barrels as one of the strategies. In 2011, a pilot rain barrel program was expanded through a partnership established by Mayor Coleman with Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District, local watershed groups, and earth-minded. The goal of the program is to improve environmental stewardship and water conservation of Columbus residents through outreach, workshops, and educational material. One of the benefits of this program for residents is the distribution of rain barrels. In order to obtain a barrel at a discounted price, residents are required to attend 121 in-person rain barrel workshops. These are proven methods for educating residents about water conservation, stormwater runoff, and non-point source pollutants. They also provide an opportunity to introduce additional stormwater practices such as rain gardens. In 2012, the Franklin Soil and Water Partners were successful in dispensing 964 rain barrels. The 2013 program will continue to focus on providing rain barrels, conservation of stormwater education, outreach and marketing, working with the watershed groups, and the promotion of the City of Columbus Green Spot and Get Green Columbus initiatives. The Green Spot Rain Barrel Program educates residents on problems caused by rain or snowmelt, which washes pollutants into nearby rivers and streams, and also provides an opportunity for residents to become part of the solution by purchasing a rain barrel through this cost-share program. This program aims to reach Columbus households with stormwater education and distribute low-cost rain barrels to City Columbus residents who participate in these workshops, and distribute approximately 50 rain barrels to participants in the city's low-income discount program. I would like to thank Director Davies and his team for their leadership in this program. With programs like the Green Spot Backyard Conservation Program, we are working to make Columbus a great place to work, live, and raise family. I urge your support on this ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0302-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Elite Escavating Company of Ohio Inc. for the Richards-Grandon-Torrance Area Sanitary Relief Sewer Roadway Improvements Project, and to authorize the transfer of $205,319.35 and an expenditure of up to $2,205,319.35 from the Sewer General Obligation Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $713,995.44 from the Department of Public Service Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, and to amend the 2012 capital improvements budget and to declare an emergency. This is a joint project between the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Public Service. This work will be completed by the Department of Public Utilities, consists of the installation of new storm and sanitary sewers. The new storm sewer installation will run from immediately east of North High Street to approximately 900 feet west of Indianolane Avenue. Department of Public Service will remove eight to 12 inches of old asphalt, which will be recycled and reused as part of the resurfacing that will be topped with a layer of new asphalt. They will also be in charge of curb replacement for a portion of the curbs that are deteriorated, and we will be installing 18 new ADA compliant curb ramps. I'd like to thank Director Kelsey and his team, as well as Director Davies and their team, for another example of coordination between intergovernmental agencies. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0357-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Kokoseen Construction Company Incorporated for the Dublin Road Water Plant Treatment Capacity Increase Filter Building Rehabilitation IC Backbone Project for the Division of Water, and to authorize an expenditure of $32,430,000 within the Waterworks Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0412-2013, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish blanket purchase orders for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Department of Public Utilities Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $17,500,000 from the Water Operating Fund to establish an auditor's certificate in the amount of $17,500,000 for the expenditures listed within this legislation, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0414-2013, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a blanket purchase orders for the purchase of sewer treatment chemicals for the Department of Public Utilities Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,700,000 from the Sewage System Operating Fund, and to establish an auditor's certificate in the amount of $1,700,000 for the expenditures listed within this legislation, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all we have in Public Utilities this evening. President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Our final committee this evening is the Rules and Reference Committee. In this evening in Rules and Reference, we have ordinance 2648-2012, to amend Section 371.02 Columbus City Codes by revising the allocation of the city's combined 5.1% hotel-motel tax to appropriate funds in the Hotel-Motel Tax Fund for the 12 months ending December 31, 2013. This ordinance has been a long time in coming for many of the stakeholders involved in the process to examine how the city distributes its portion of the hotel-motel or bed tax revenue. Many of those stakeholders, our partners, are here tonight to take the next step forward in our shared efforts to promote our city, the arts, and the human services community. The ordinance before us will increase funding for Experienced Columbus, the Greater Columbus Arts Council, and Human Services without raising the bed tax itself, to create a permanent, sustainable funding stream for all three of these important sectors of the community. The reallocation of the bed tax revenue comes after more than a year of public meetings, and as a result of a series of recommendations made to the city leaders by the Funding Review and Advisory Committee, FRAC, a group formed by this council and Mayor Coleman, to study current, future, and potential non-income tax revenue, and the way the city funds economic development, human services, cultural arts, and the promotion of travel and tourism. All three groups saw the value in working together to come up with a funding plan that ensures the long-term sustainability of each of their missions, to grow our local economy, enrich the lives of our residents and visitors, and care for the most vulnerable in our community. And, as a result, we have a plan to increase the city's investment in all three areas, not just through this ordinance, but through a continued partnership to work together to find additional revenue streams. With us tonight are representatives of all three stakeholder groups impacted by this ordinance. In a moment, I will call upon those who have filled out speaker slips. But before I do, I want to try and put in perspective what the changes we are making will mean in practical terms. In the case of Experienced Columbus, it will mean a significant increase in funding for sales and marketing efforts by Experienced Columbus and the Greater Columbus Sports Commission to attract more business to Columbus, and an estimated $689 million impact, economic impact, from increased visitor spending. The ordinance includes an increase of approximately $450,000 for GCAC. Currently, nonprofit arts and cultural organizations generate $226 million in economic impact annually in Columbus and support more than 8,500 jobs. The human services portion of the hotel tax share increases from 0.42% to 0.51%, or $363,000 in permanent funding in prevention, emergency, and basic needs for residents. And, what's more, our increased investment in Experienced Columbus will help increase the number of heads and beds, and over time, increase the associated bed tax dollars collected. That means that the increase in funding for the arts and human services will continue to grow over time, and as our efforts to promote Columbus mature and our return on investment is realized. Before I call on our speakers, I do want to recognize the efforts of councilmembers Priscilla Tyson, Zach Klein, and Herschel Craig. Their service on the FRAC and their ongoing counsel and guidance has been very helpful to me throughout this entire process. I know that the stakeholders appreciate your stewardship in leading the community through what has been a very productive dialogue about how we set our priorities and how we collectively fulfill our commitment to Columbus. Councilmembers, particularly Councilmembers Tyson, Klein, Craig, Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much, President Ginter. Let me say in the way of comment, you know, that certainly I felt it was a comprehensive process, a very thoughtful process. All of the entities involved, you know, those attended regular meetings, they were engaged in the process. I think with the end result being the betterment of our city, the ensuring that the quality of life of all of our families and our children are in good stead, I certainly want to compliment all of those that are here tonight, and those that are not here, that served long hours to really wrestle with some very, very tough issues. And again, with the net results being that our city will continue to thrive and grow, and so it was indeed a pleasure and a privilege for me to serve alongside and really listen as we talked about the importance of the human service community and its impact on our families and our children, Experienced Columbus, and all of its efforts to move our city forward, beds and heads, and make sure that we were really on the cutting edge of identifying appropriate sites and making sure that we were inviting people from all over the nation and the world, in fact, to come and visit Columbus and enhance our fiscal and infrastructure resources in the City of Columbus, and certainly the arts. And certainly, the arts are vitally important as a critical partner to the life of our city and our community. So again, it was indeed my pleasure and privilege to be a part of such an important and critical event. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Ginther. And first of all, I just want to commend you and Mayor Coleman for bringing this group together to begin to make the changes that we needed to make in order to make sure that Human Services, the arts, and our tourism areas begin to have the dollars that they need to continue to make Columbus a great place to live. And I, first of all, besides thanking you and Mayor Coleman, I want to thank the committee, the individuals that worked really hard during this period of time, and led by Tom Katzenmeyer as the chair, but representatives from the business community, from Experience Columbus, from the Human Services area, and from the arts, from GCAC, and the arts were there, and certainly shared their information with this group in order for us to get to where we are today. I mean, they shared with us the importance of the work that they do each and every day for their respective areas of expertise, but also, they shared it in a way that shows how they all have to work together for Columbus to be the great city that we are, and that we need all three of those organizations to be able, or those entities, I should say, to be able to move Columbus forward. So this is an important day to begin to change the bed tax dollars, but also, this is the beginning of the conversation. We all know that there's still significant dollars that are needed to get us to the place where we will be a national leader in all three of those areas. So I am proud and thankful for where we are today. Certainly, as you mentioned, the numbers speak for themselves as to why we are making this change, but we will, it's been a privilege working with my councilmembers and the community to get to this place, and look forward to the continued dialogue for additional dollars to be given to move this city forward. It was a privilege. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, President Ginther. I'd also like to commend and acknowledge the work that the FRAC did. Been to all the meetings and know that there were some spirited discussions involved by all the groups representing their each and individual organizations. But, you know, one thing that was noticeable to me since I first got on council was one of the presentations that then-director of Experience Columbus, Paul Astelford, and Mike Brown came to me and talked about our city's stake compared to peer cities of investments made, and how Columbus is at best in the middle of the road. And we are on the precipice of a city of landing some very big conventions and really skyrocketing ourselves in the marketing of the city that will, in turn, with the theory that a rising tide will raise all boats, put more people into beds that will then fund the arts, will then fund the human services. So this is a terrific first step of making the much necessary and significant investment for the City of Columbus to compete with the other Midwestern cities that go after major conventions and bring people and lure people in that spend money at our restaurants, that spend money in our art galleries on maybe a gallery hop night, that use the services in the City of Columbus so that our residents who work here get paid, and pays their bills by bringing people in. And the billion-dollar industry that the tourism industry is, this is the first appropriate step in order to make the return on investment so that all of Columbus residents win. And until we identify what those new funding streams are, as long as Experience Columbus, and I tasked the new director this too, as long as Experience Columbus does their job and we put our money where our mouth is with luring new conventions and people to the City of Columbus, then the arts and the human services will win, and we will be able to fund the many art events that GCAC, for example, does, as well as help those that are desperately needed in the human services world. So, President Ginther, support this ordinance, this code change, and I think it's going to be a terrific first step for the City of Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers? Just one final acknowledgement of the mayor and his staff. We would not be here tonight having this conversation without their support and coordination with him, so I want to thank him publicly. We do have a couple of speakers on the code change this evening. Our first speaker is Milt Baughman. Welcome to council chambers. If you come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. Milt, you have three minutes to speak to the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President Ginther and councilmembers. I'm Milt Baughman, the president of the Greater Columbus Arts Council, and on behalf of our trustees and the city's arts and cultural organizations and the many individual artists that are supported by GCAC, I want to express our appreciation for your consideration of revising the allocation of the city's hotel motel bed tax. In 2012, through the city's bed tax, GCAC was able to fund 65 arts organizations and almost 100 individual artists. Importantly, and has been discussed, the proposed change in the allocation will provide the opportunity for increased funding, not only for arts and culture, but also for Experience Columbus, our partners, and also our human service sector. This funding will build upon the great work that's been done by these important components of our community. Speaking very personally, I'm very appreciative of the leadership shown by city council and the mayor's office in forming the Financial Review and Advisory Committee. This, of course, was charged with evaluating funding for not only the arts but Experience Columbus and our human services area. Each of these sectors makes the City of Columbus a vibrant place to live. These sectors drive economic development, create an attractive working environment, and provide an important social service network. The FRAC review provided us an important platform for each of us to highlight our contributions to the city. Thank you very much for considering this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Baughman. Any questions or comments from Mr. Baughman? Thank you for your leadership and all of your work and services, community, Milt. Our next speaker is Brian Ross. Mr. Ross, if you come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brian Ross, and I am the president and CEO of Experience Columbus, and would love to extend our thank you to Mayor Coleman, Council President Ginther, and councilmembers for the passion and leadership that you have for Columbus. Wanted to also make sure that we thank everybody that served on that FRAC committee. We know it was a lot of time, a lot of conversations, but we believe all of the organizations involved gained a lot of credibility and showed a lot of transparency. So I think that set us up for us to move forward as a partnership. And I also wanted to make sure that I thanked Milt Baughman with GCAC and Bo Chilton with Human Services, I think he's here as well, for the collaboration and partnership. As I said, the FRAC committee was great to get us all together. We've continued to build that relationship and collaboration, and will need to for this community to fully realize the potential. Also, I just wanted to say thank you because the City of Columbus's increased investment in Experience Columbus and the Greater Columbus Sports Commission will allow us to implement our five-year aspirational plan, which I believe we've had a chance to share with most of you, that will really give us the opportunity and allow us to outperform those core competitive cities that Councilmember Klein related to. And with that, everyone ends. As we move forward, this is a $7.8 billion tourism economy. That does affect the success of the arts, the government, businesses, human services, and the residents of Greater Columbus. So we're excited about that. But it won't be done unless we capitalize on that collaborative spirit that we have in the community, and it will take all of us to execute this aspirational plan. This is sort of our north star and a big reach, but I'm confident we can do it when we work together as a community. And then last but not least, can't wait to see all of you this coming Thursday at our annual meeting. You'll hear a lot more about it, so thank you.
Brian, forgive me. This is the first time you've been in council chambers since being named president and CEO of Experience Columbus, and I should have acknowledged that. Congratulations again. We have a great deal of confidence in you and your team and a very important part of our local economy, so look forward to continue working with you, and congratulations again. Councilmember Paley.
It's Mr. Ross, and Mr. Chilton, and Milt Baughman. It's important for me, and I think the rest of the City of Columbus, the one really good thing about the FRAC committee that I've noted is that we're not working against each other anymore, we're working with each other. And it's just amazing on how much we can get done now that we're a team. It's really hard when you're trying to raise money for your organization to realize that helping other organizations may also help you, and it's really encouraging to see that all of the organizations are working together to make this city great. So thank you for that. Thank you also for the FRAC committee.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any other questions or comments? I'm going to take, thank you for coming down this evening. To take a point of personal privilege, I don't have a speaker slip, but I don't think this would be complete if we didn't hear from the Human Service Chamber and Mr. Bo Chilton, who's president and CEO of Impact Community Action, is with us this evening. I'd like to ask Mr. Chilton to come forward and share any comments or thoughts on the legislation. Mr. Chilton?
Yes, thank you, President Ginther, President Pro Tim Miller, members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to say thank you. I know that this job at times can seem thankless, and this chamber would be packed if we had a controversial issue, and so we don't take enough time to thank you for your leadership, and we wanted to make sure that we join the chorus of our colleagues from Experience Columbus and GCAC to thank you for your leadership. So often, we talk about the importance and the concept of public-private nonprofit partnerships, but this was that concept in action. We came together, we had different agendas, we had different thoughts, there were anxieties there about what will be the path forward. Some assumed that there may be a decision that's already been made, but what you showed us through this process was a well-reasoned deliberative process where we got to hear from each other, and we got to understand the issues, and that we truly did form a common agenda and a shared vision for our path forward. There's another person who deserves some thanks here, who was kind of a behind-the-scenes person who really helped bring us together to have these kind of conversations that we needed to, and that's Doug Kreidler. He coined one of the phrases that says, "Columbus really has a spirit of cooperation." He talked about, "We prosper when we care." And so he had a big part in that, and I want to thank him as well. Again, I thank you for your leadership. I will say that spending that one year with FRAC and learning some lessons, some important things there, now also serving on the Education Commission, I think that maybe I should be on the payroll for city government now. But I hope that with the commission that we take a page from this playbook about how you communicate, how you debate the ideas, and at the end of the day, with the spirit of Columbus, we will get behind a common agenda and a shared vision that includes all of us, because we all prosper when we care. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Any comments? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Ginther, and I just want to commend Bo Chilton for coming down and speaking, but also for recognizing Doug Kreidler in the room. And I had him, if he hadn't said that, I was definitely going to recognize him as well as Yvonne Honeycutt, because part of everyone coming together was that each of these groups have their own respective leaders, and how the leaders worked with their teams to make sure that everyone wanted to move in the same direction. So I thank Yvonne, but I definitely have to thank Doug, because even before even the FRAC was even brought together, Doug was working with all these different groups, making sure they were going to have efficiencies, they would work together, working for the best interests of the City of Columbus. So it is great that he is in council chambers this evening to see this finally come together and us begin to have movement in this very important area. He loves the arts, he loves human services, I mean, he loves tourism, he loves Columbus, and so I'm glad that you're here, Doug, to be able to see this, and thank you for your work in this community. And lastly, for Experience Columbus, with the press release that came out today, congratulations on your success for booking more hotels, for looking at your number, I mean, your numbers were just amazing for 2012, and certainly, I know with, as Councilwoman Klein mentioned, with the increase in funding, I'm sure that we will see those numbers continue to increase, but we're glad to see us outpacing some of the national averages. So thank you so much for the work you've done already, Brian, and thank you very much for your board chairs in the room. Lisa Henson, thank you for being here, Lisa, in this room today, and the sports commission is also represented here this evening. So thank you so very, very much.
Mr. Kreidler, you've been acknowledged twice. Do you have any comments you'd like to add, or any defense of what's been said here? You have to come to the podium if you want to say anything. Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Kreidler, for your service and work. Any other final comments or questions from councilmembers? If not, entertain a motion for passage.
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance is passed. Anything else to come before council this evening? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We have several non-agenda speakers we'll take momentarily.